Okay. They're ready.
Must be important.
Mm-hmm. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting to order for Planning Development and Building Committee at 5:33 PM. The first order of business is invocation. Councilman Frittel, if you wouldn't mind giving that. If you guys please stand.
Please stand. Dear Lord, I ask you to continue to look out over the county and us as individuals, the state, and the country. Watch out and guide us. Give us clear eyes and wisdom to do your work. I ask you this, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
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 Thank you, Mr. Frittel. First item we have this evening is a public hearing, a recommendation for second reading regarding rezoning request number 930 for Los Angeles Hires to rezone 1.0 acres located at 507 East Fifth North Street near Somerville, TMS number 138-00-00-013 from Transitional Residential District, TRM, to Office and Institutional District, OI. I will open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. This first item for your consideration is a zoning request. This is about one acre parcel for any of you that are familiar with Rusty's Driving School as you're headed on 78 towards Ladson. It's on the left. They're looking to sell the lot. It'll be for a different use. That property is currently zoned TRM, which is a single-family residential district. The building looks like it's an older house that's been used for a long time by Rusty's Driving School. So the rezoning that they're looking to go to is Office and Institutional, which would allow the continued use of the structure for limited commercial opportunities. It would also allow a single-family residential use, just depending on who purchased it. The OI district is intended to help transitional areas where you have residential structures being used commercially as it goes to commercial, which suits the needs at this time. This property will probably redevelop in the future, but the reason we're not going with a more intense zoning is because it will likely end up having to annex in order to provide any changes or updates to sewer. So right now, OI supports the existing style business, continuation of similar-type businesses, but also going back to residential should they decide to do that. This went to Planning Commission at their March meeting, and they recommended approval.
Are there any additional comments or anyone that would like to speak at the public hearing regarding this matter and the rezoning from TRM to OI for the Rusty's Driving School?
Just a question. OI allows for residential?
Come, just come to the podium, Mr. Fagan. Name and address, please, sir.
Tommy Fagan, 111 Ponderosa Road, Somerville, South Carolina. I said, do OI gives residential, is allowed residential?
Single-family residential, yes.
I'm sorry?
Single-family, yes.
Single-family residential. So in that area. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any others wish to speak? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Next on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing, a recommendation for second reading regarding an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County zoning and land development standards, ordinance number 0413 as amended with respect to Article 8, Section 8.2.7b1, maximum density, and Article 21, Section 21.13c, off-site streets, right-ofways, and stormwater. The purpose of this amendment is to update and align the standards and requirements for townhouse developments. I will open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. This amendment's being pursued to align the densities between the townhouse units in the MUC district and townhouse units within the R3 district. If you remember, the MUC district allows a wide variety of uses, single-family detached, single-family attached, multifamily, commercial, and light industrial. And the multifamily density is already aligned between the various zoning districts at 13 units per net acre. This also allows mobile home parks at, I believe, 7.8 or 8.7 units per acre. And so this just brings into alignment the R3 townhouse density, which is already 7.3 units per net acre, and then the MUC would become 7.3, just to provide that consistency and also to prioritize townhouse development over multifamily development within the MUC district. It also, within our land development standards, aligns our off-site connection density from five units per acre to 7.3, just to keep it consistent with townhouse developments. So we took this to Planning Commission in March, and they recommended approval of it.
Thank you, Ms. Reinderson. Are there any others wishing to speak on this particular development or, excuse me, amendment to the development standards? Mr. Fagan, to the podium just one more time for the record.
Tommy Fagan, 111 Ponderosa Road. No, just a question. This is bringing down and aligning the density down to 7.3 per acre?
That's correct.
And where some of it, was it 8.7 or was it?
13.
Is that what this does?
Yes, sir, just providing alignment. Yes, ma'am. Please come to the podium, name and address.
My name is Linda Haynes Wetzel, and I reside at 108 Atlantic Street. Don't you think we have enough townhouses in Somerville? The development is atrocious. Nobody can, the way that the housing development is, it's ridiculous because you're pushing mostly us out of the neighborhoods because every time any land is available, you grab it. And I'm tired of the phone calls calling me about telling me they want to redevelop my neighborhood. And every time I tell them, my land is not for sale. I didn't see a for sale sign up there. I told them $3.3 million, and they hang the phone out. This is ridiculous. Somerville needs to continue to stay the way that it is because everybody is trying to push us out.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel.
Just curious, if they offered you 3.3 million, would you take it?
I'd take it.
It's okay for some people.
It's okay, it's okay for somebody else getting the money, but it's not okay for you getting the money.
That's what it is. You're too cheap. You're trying to push us out. You won't even give us $10,000. They, 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 oh.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Ms. Reinderson.
Finish his comment. My grandmother's lot sold for $15,000 on Palmetto Street. It was resold for $400,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Ms. Reinderson.
Yes, if I could just offer a quick clarification, I think answers to some questions. This isn't changing the uses that are currently allowed within the MUC district. It's already permitted use along with apartments, mobile home parks, single-family. What this is doing is just aligning the densities between the R3 development and the MUC development, very specifically to townhomes.
Thank you, Ms. Reinderson. Any other comments? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Next item on the agenda this evening, a public hearing, a recommendation for second reading regarding an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County zoning and land development standards, ordinance number 0413 as amended with respect to Article 5, Section 5.7.2, fees and development review fee account. The purpose of this amendment is to update the planning and zoning fee schedule. I will open the public hearing.
Yes, this is a very quick and easy amendment. We're not making major changes to our fee schedule. What we're doing here is capturing the fiscal impact analysis fee, which previously had been paid to a consultant to perform that service. Now we're charging a basic fee for in-house providing of that service, and we're adding in miscellaneous conditional uses. We already have conditional use permits. We have various fees assigned. This just captures any that are not specifically listed. It also adds language that says that fees are not applying to county-initiated requests. That's it. This won't mount to any appreciable difference, positive or negative, to our budget generated, but it did need to be addressed in our ordinance. So Planning Commission looked at this at their March meeting and recommended approval.
Thank you, Ms. Reinderson. Are there any other attendees wishing to speak regarding this update? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Any other motions?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Motion.
I'm going to call this Dorchester County Water and Sewer Committee meeting to order. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and we had an invocation at the previous committee meeting. One item on the agenda tonight is a request for approval of a new sewer service by Dorchester County or Dorchester Commerce, make sure I get that right, Dorchester Commerce LLC for the Missouri Track Phase 1, TMS number 121-00-00-007, located near the town of Somerville.
So move.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Are there any other motions?
Motion, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. The county council meeting will begin at 6 o'clock, so we'll get started here in about 12 minutes. I got a thumbs up in the back. I gotta look at what today's.
That is a subtle presentation.
I'd like to call this May 5th County Council meeting to order, and I will ask everyone if they'll please rise. Councilwoman Rita Mae Rank is going to lead us in an invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you that we're all able to get here safely and to go about the business. We ask that you'll be present here in this room as we do conduct the county business tonight, be with all of us, and keep us focused, and help us to do what's right for the county. We thank you, Lord, for all our first responders. We ask that you keep them safe and bring them home safely to their families, and we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is adoption of minutes from the April 21st County Council meeting.
So moved.
There is a motion and several seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is adoption of proclamation number 25-08 proclaiming May 4th through 10th, 2025, as National Correctional Officers Week in Dorchester County. And I am going to ask Ms. Rank if she will read that proclamation.
State of South Carolina County of Dorchester proclamation number 2508 proclaiming May 4th to 10th, 2025, as National Correctional Officers Week in Dorchester County. Whereas correctional officers in Dorchester County have the difficult and office-dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of over 270 male and female inmates at the Elsie Knight Dorchester County Detention Center, and whereas their position is essential to the day-to-day operations of the detention center, without them, it would be impossible to achieve the foremost institutional goals of security and control. And whereas throughout history, correctional officers have played a pivotal role in upholding justice and rehabilitation within our communities. They work diligently in challenging environments facing unique risks and pressures. work diligently in challenging environments facing unique risks and pressures on a daily basis. Despite these challenges, they remain steadfast in their commitment to public safety and the rehabilitation of those in their care. And whereas the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserve our utmost respect. And whereas it is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are a vital component of the field of corrections. And whereas National Correctional Officers Week provides an opportunity for us to express our gratitude and support for these brave individuals. It's a time to acknowledge their sacrifices, recognize their dedication, and honor the vital role they play in maintaining the fabric of our society. Now therefore, be it resolved that Dorchester County Council hereby proclaims May 4th to 10th, 2025 as National Correctional Officers Week in Dorchester County in honor of the invaluable contributions of correctional officers to our communities. Adopted this 5th day of May, 2025 by C. David Chenus, Chairman, Dorchester County Council, attests Lona R. Conrad, Clerk to Counsel.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous, and we're going to try to, I'm going to do all of these proclamations, and then we'll get folks up here one at a time, so we don't do that back and forth. Next item on the agenda is proclamation, let me get it right. I gotta get, I know what it is. It's '09, but let me make a hundred percent. Proclaim, but it is 18, oh yeah, 2509. Proclamation proclaiming May 18th through 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Dorchester County, and I'm going to ask if Councilman Fridle will actually read that proclamation.
Yes, sir. State of South Carolina, proclamation number 25-09, County of Dorchester, proclaiming May 18th through 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Dorchester County. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and the team's ready to provide life-saving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas Dorchester County EMS is on pace to eclipse 26,000 calls for service this fiscal year to include more than 13,000 hospital transports. And whereas access to quality emergency care drastically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas EMS has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the EMS system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of EMS teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And now therefore, to be resolved, the Dorchester County Council hereby proclaims the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Adopted this 5th of May, 2025 by C. David Chenus, Chairman, and attests Laura, Lona R. Conrad.
So moved.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I will say that we've got top-flight EMS in this county. I know when I ran the Lowe store and in the summertime, I had them there, seems like at least once a month in the garden center, and they were phenomenal. Just phenomenal.
I know those of us that have had the, either the unfortunate opportunity or the fortunate opportunity to have to use EMS have certainly appreciated the level of professionalism and what they have done helping our family members, or helping those that we know. And we definitely have easily the best EMS system in the Low country, and I'll stand on that one over and over again. So we appreciate all they do. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. The next item on the agenda is adoption of proclamation number 2510, proclaiming May 25th as Building Safety Month, and I will ask Councilman Eddie Crosby if he will read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proclamation to recognize Building Safety Month for May 2025. Whereas Dorchester County, South Carolina is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and a central role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, floodplain managers, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure this safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern buildings, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Dorchester County also strives to protect property from flood hazards by actively and voluntarily participating in the National Flood Insurance Program's community rating system by instituting higher regulatory standards, thereby earning citizens discounts on their flood insurance premiums. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas "Game On," the theme of the Building Safety Month for 2025, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, federal agencies in protecting lives and property. And now therefore, be it resolved that Dorchester County Council wishes to proclaim this month of May, 2025 as Building Safety Month, adopted this 5th day of May, Cinco de Mayo, 2025, by Chairman David Chenus and attested Lona Conrad, Clerk to Counsel.
So moved.
There are several motions and several seconds. Any discussion?
I'm just curious, did Laura actually put Cinco de Mayo in?
She did. She gave me a little Spanish tutorial beforehand, so I got that right.
Good job, Laura.
I said Laura. Excuse me, Lona.
Couple of, one of the things in there, and I think some of us got an email recently in regards to public safety, and it's kind of funny when we see public safety and people think fire and police. They often leave out some of the most critical people in there when you look at public safety and you look at building safety, and you look at EMS, and you look at the cornerstone of all of those, that it doesn't work without 911 dispatchers. So again, this is recognizing another element of public safety in Dorchester County that probably gets overlooked more than anything else, and that is the building officials that actually are going out there to make sure that these guys, trying to hold them accountable to build a safe structure. So, and I don't want to leave out Water and Sewer back there with Mr. Harper. Again, an opportunity for public safety without clean drinking water, none of us are safe. So, all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. So what I'm going to do right now is if I can, so that Aaron doesn't yell at me later, if I can get the corrections officers, if we can meet up at the podium up here, we got, who's here? I'm looking to see. There you go, right there. If we'll meet up here at the podium, we're going to hand you that proclamation. They're going to take some smiling photos, and we'll get you done. And then next, we will get, I know what it is. It's EMS to come up. So a few folks will come up next. And then finally, we will get Missy and all of those folks from Building Services to show up. So just keep an eye on it, and Aaron's going to keep us cycling through so we can do this in one fell swoop.
By the way, did y'all, did y'all see the video from the, that the Sheriff's Office put out on the Corrections Officers Week? It was a great video that they put out.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much. We appreciate you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I gotta get, I gotta get right here, so I can make sure you get this in the right spot. Everybody gets this. All right. So we're gonna get everybody, the three of y'all don't like the heat in this picture. The three of y'all, let me get out of here. Because this is for you, not.
You can come closer. I don't bite.
That's what we need.
Are you ready? One, two, three.
And maybe we never meet in a professional manner.
You'd meet her too. She's at the Windsor.
She can book and process you.
Never, never.
Now we got EMS.
Do you know them all on a person-based basis? Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you for the, thank you for everything. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
It's like, it's like post-game. You just walk up on your.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Sir, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, we're on. You ready?
I guess so.
Well, while they're all talking, I gotta tell a story on, a little bit on EMS. I had to take my mother to Roper Care. She, blood pressure was very high. My mother has a specific hospital that she wants to go to, and so they transported her west Ashland. I asked, first thing I said, is it busy? Because if it's not, you can do it. Otherwise, I'm taking her. And they didn't want me to do that. But it was interesting because having sat in the car with my mother for about 45 minutes while we were waiting and talking to her about what she had done, what medicine she had taken, and what medicine she hadn't taken, she appeared to have taken all of her medicine. The paramedic, EMT, that was on that wagon taking her to St. Roper, St. Francis, basically got out of her that she actually hadn't taken all of her blood pressure medicine. And I, and we had spent a while, did you take it all? Did you take it all? She assured me she did, until ultimately that EMT managed to figure out, no, she had not taken it all. So, in any case, so that's certainly appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for all you did.
Thank you for everything you do. Thanks for taking care of my husband. Thanks for everything you do.
And I know these folks probably catch more grief at times than they catch thanks, but trust me, we couldn't do it without them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another, the next item on the agenda is, and we're going to do a little bit of an explanation here, just to make certain, 2023 Dorchester County actually ahead of, but in accordance with state law, rolled back our property taxes on boats and motors. So we had already moved it back nearly 43%. This year, in the wisdom, the legislature said, hey, we're going to roll back property taxes on boats two years after Dorchester County had done so. And another, I think two other counties in the state of South Carolina had done the same thing. The challenge ultimately becomes the way the language is worded. We're not really sure what it does. So as a result, the first reading tonight is a little bit preemptive. We've had conversations with the legislature, South Carolina Association, the counties has also had some conversations. This may never see second or third reading, because if they amend this to make certain that those of us that have already rolled back those taxes aren't affected by a second tax rollback, then ultimately, the second, third reading won't be necessary. But we will do first reading by title only tonight of an ordinance to repeal Dorchester County Ordinance Number 23-17, an ordinance to exempt from property tax, 42 and 75 one-hundredths percent of fair market value of watercraft and its motor pursuant to South Carolina Code, annotated Section 1237220B38 subsection B.
So moved.
Second.
So there is a motion and a second. Any discussion? I probably preempted most of the discussion to explain what that is. Again, this is not, we are not raising taxes, though we are eliminating potentially what we have done only to keep this unintended consequence from Columbia of rolling downhill in this case. So, any more discussion?
Because the way the law that they're trying to pass is that it's cut by 50% of what it is.
Correct.
And so if we left ours in place, then it would be cut again in half, the 43%.
That is, that is correct. It's not cut, it is assuming that no one used that section of state law, even though, again, at least three counties, possibly four, did use that state law in 2023 when we had the opportunity to do that. We will, quite honestly, I'm probably going to jump ahead. I might get yelled at later, but we're looking at other opportunities to reduce property taxes from the 10 and a half that they currently are on some of the personal property in Dorchester County. We're going to word that one a little differently, so if they decide to fix two years from now what they need to fix a long time ago, we won't have to do this again to make this confusing. But this ultimately is just a, some level of self-protection because of the unintended, I need Peggy Bangle here tonight with the unintended consequences. But in any case, all in favor? We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a request to address council. I have four, and I am going to ask you to come up to the front, come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. And the first one on my list is Ms. Whetzel.
My name is Linda Heinz Whetzel. I reside at 108 Atlantic Street. The first time I came to a city or council meeting, I was told to give the person what I wanted to talk about. I can talk for myself. You people need to do your job. This story is about the fox and the hen house. So many times I've stood before the county council and talked about pollution, living with the dust, noise, and my house and the neighborhood. Think of living where I live at, where you have 4:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, people working, welding, trucks going back and forth. I've called Mr. Hearn, I've called Mr. Ward, nobody returned my phone call. How many drinks have you had at the barn? Mr. Knight owns this property. He doesn't clean it. I have mosquitoes. I'm spending $2,000 in my backyard to see if I can sit in my backyard and enjoy it with a fire pit, and I can't do that. Governor Sanford wrote me a letter, but I guess he was on the Allegheny Trail. Governor Sanford wrote me a letter, but I guess he was on the Allegheny Trail when he wrote that letter. And you know, we ask you to do your job. Pine Forest complained about the same soot that I complained about, and nothing, you never heard anything again. I've been complaining and complaining and complaining, and none of you did anything. You could talk a good show. You came over there. Mr. Ward and them got eaten up by mosquitoes because how bad it is back there. You got people from another country urinating in my backyard, and all the water is ankle-deep in my backyard. Nobody has come to do anything to help me where I live at. One oh eight Atlantic Street, you changed the zoning. All these zonings you're changing, you're tearing up neighborhoods. That neighborhood has been there since nineteen fifty-six. What do we do when you, you drink, drinking buddies get together and change the laws? How many times do you have to do that? We need somebody who's gonna stand up and do the right thing. People need to, I pay taxes. My house is paid for, so why can't I live in it? I've called DEHEC. They don't have permits back there because whatever they're doing is wrong. You got granite. Every morning when I wake up, my windshield is sot. I have to wash it off, and now my car is peeling. I don't have three brand-new vehicles since I lived over there since nineteen ninety-nine, and every last one of them, the paint has been peeling off of them because of all that soot and stuff that's been coming from the land. Please do your job. The fox in the hen house, remember that.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I have Ms. Victoria Singleton. If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Victoria Singleton, two two nine Orangeburg Road. I saw your article in the Journal Scene, Mr. Chenness. Very good article. My daughter and my son and my granddaughter graduated from Clemson the same as you. So I guess you have something in common. Anyway, my question to you is that Missouri Track, is that on Orangeburg Road, the wonderful sewer system?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it? What, DSS, an old DSS building?
No, 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 on the other end. Complete the other end, at the railroad tracks.
Okay, okay. My other question to you, the young man mentioned about earthquake. You know we're an earthquake fault, don't you? And you're building so many houses. Do you see the houses being built? I mean, gee, we're gonna all sink in the ocean. But you know, some of us, really, we get earthquakes all the time. So, and they're tearing down all the trees, which means a hurricane, we not have anything to keep the water away. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the list, Mr. Tommy Fagan.
Tom Fagan, one 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 Ponderose Road, Somerville, South Carolina. I got my question answered earlier, but here in your handout and on the computer, it says, "Request for Approval for New Sewer Service by Dorchester Commerce LLC for the Missouri Track Phase One Tax Map Number Located Near the Town of Somerville." There's nothing about industrial buildings or anything there. It'd be nice if there was a little more information put into this because, let me just say that the people that I know don't have a whole lot of trust in our county council, in our county government right now. When you see sewer service going in, all you can think is townhouses or crammed-in little neighborhoods. And you know, it's easy to jump to conclusions. I appreciate y'all letting us know a little bit more about what's going on, if you could do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, Sheriff Sam Richardson. Sheriff Richardson, you have, get you to state your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir. Everybody's equal when they stand at that podium, so.
Sheriff Sam Richardson, two twelve Deming Way.
Yeah, we don't want you to know where you live.
It's a privilege and personal honor to stand before you today to recognize one of the finest examples of leadership, professionalism, dedication within our agency. Today, we celebrate the achievements of Sergeant Laqueta Brown, our twenty twenty-four Detention Deputy of the Year.
Ask you to come forward, please.
Sergeant Brown has built a team that reflects her values, professionalism, accountability, and teamwork. She mentors new deputies, encourages growth, and never hesitates to jump in when things get tough. Her decisions are thoughtful, her leadership is firm, and her impact is undeniable. She's a team supervisor. She leads by example. She wears her uniform with pride and purpose. In every shift, she steps in with, she sets the tone, not just with words, but with action. Her presence commands respect, but not because of her rank, but because of her unwavering fairness, commoner pressure, and belief in doing the right thing. But more than anything, she reminds us that the work done behind those secured doors are just as critical as any patrol, investigation, or operation on the streets. Because maintaining the safety and order inside of a facility is not just about containment, it's about upholding justice, dignity, and human rights, even in the hardest of places. Sergeant Brown, your tireless service, your strength, your leadership do not go unnoticed. On behalf of our agency and the entire community you serve, I thank you. And you have set it standard not only for your team, but for all of us. Congratulations on being named the twenty twenty-four Detention Deputy of the Year.
Mr. Ward, and I may have jumped ahead, Mr. Ward. I think you had some comments you.
So Ms. Wetzel, I know that you questioned whether we are concerned about your situation. I can assure you, and I will share with you before you leave tonight, that on the sixteenth of April, we in fact received a response from DES, formerly DEHEC, about that specific situation at eight eighteen Central Avenue that you are expressing concern about. I've also provided a copy of that to Mr. Hearn as well. So I'm gonna give that to you before you leave.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward?
Mr. Chairman and Council, we've provided those items as they came in.
All right, next item on the agenda are guests, Mr. Joe Crowder, Chief of Dorchester County Emergency Medical Service. And he is gonna give us a programmatic update, since assuming the role of chief. And we're gonna pat him on the back and thank him for probably a sometimes thankless job. So you get to start this way. So I appreciate you being here tonight.
Eight twenty-one West Fifth North Street. Business address. All right, good evening, members of council, county administration and guests. It is my privilege to stand before you tonight, but more importantly, standing up here earlier with the EMS people in the audience that have entrusted me to lead them. When I came in January of twenty twenty-one, the world was a much different place than it is now. We were in the middle of COVID, and for the next three years, we have pushed ahead to ensure that the citizens and visitors get the best possible pre-hospital care that is available. EMS has always been the lifeline for our communities, responding to those times of crisis, provide the care to save a life, or just providing comforting voice or a hand to hold. As I look ahead to continue the work of my predecessors, I wanted to give you just a glimpse of a few things we have achieved and one important focus for the future. So our most valuable asset obviously is our, is our people. Let's see, did we get people? Where's our people back? We missed a slide. That's okay. Our most valuable asset is our people. I'm confident in saying that without the support of the council and the county administration and the recruitment initiatives and the competitive wages, the slide that was supposed to be up there may look a lot different, okay? As would be on the slide for FY twenty-five, we continue to improve our vacancy rate to the point that I'm happy to report that as of today, that all of our full-time positions have been filled. To give you a comparison, in January of twenty twenty-one, we had a greater than twenty percent vacancy rate for our full-time positions. This slide indicates our response times, or our response, response times and totals. As you can see, the information that's provided is our total response count as of the twenty-fourth of April of twenty twenty-five. It indicates our total responses, our total patient encounters. But what's most importantly is if you notice down to the bottom of the slide, the highlighted in the green, the green boxes to the red indicates our day of, our day of week and our time of day indicating the busiest times and locations throughout our county. The graph to the right, all the way to the far right, indicates our busiest truck. And if you notice, the information that's provided to you there indicates our Medic Two Truck, which is our Latson Road, our Latson Road Station, okay? Which is our station that's thereabouts the point of Somerville Med. This slide indicates our response times totals. There are things in this equation that we can modify, such as vehicle location and out-of-shoot times, but we cannot do anything about traffic, unfortunately. All this also implies into our average transport times. We look at time differences with the use of lights and sirens versus not. One important time that we do pay special attention to is that time that's located up there in the top right-hand corner of this box, which is our average turnaround time at the local hospitals. If we are delayed there, that means we cannot respond to another call for service. We work closely with our partners to identify and correct deficiencies that would improve the process. The lower portion of the slide shows information on response times based on the acuity of calls once that our great nine-one-one communicators have screened the calls and dispatched it as well. In two thousand twenty-two, EMS identified several key areas of our operations that we needed to improve on. I'm not saying that the previous work was flawed, but there was areas for opportunity. Between myself and my predecessor, we decided to add a dedicated person to look at the quality of our department. So in two thousand twenty-three, the Assistant Chief of Quality was brought on. Mr. Spencer Watson was tasked with a variety of responsibilities from looking at billing and collection practices to how our vehicles were maintained. He was also tasked with working alongside our Assistant Chief of Training to shore up our new employee orientation and develop some professional development opportunities for our current staff. If I can digress for a second, repeating back to our staffing and our wonderful staffing status as we are now, it showcases our vacancy rate and the one direct result of the addition of Mr. Watson's position. We have improved tremendously with our review of care provided, how our personnel receive feedback on their performance, and improve the exchange of information with the local hospitals. We've also adopted up-to-date equipment and aggressive medical guidelines based on best clinical evidence. I could go on and on about all the great things we've accomplished in two thousand twenty-four, but wasn't given three minutes, but I was given a very strict timeline to keep up. Looking forward to the coming months, the Community Paramedic Program was first thawed up many years ago in other parts of the country to address concerns that hospitals, with hospitals had with reemissions in certain medical subset of patients. We started a discussion of a community paramedic program in Dorchester County about a year to a year and a half ago to address the problems that you see on the slide. Ms. Anzie Johnson has worked tirelessly on the creation of this valuable program to meet the population she and other community partners have identified as in most of need. From the patients that have limited access to quality healthcare services, those that overutilize EMS for basic healthcare needs, or even those patients that need mental health services, this program is designed to bridge those gaps. We have partnered with agencies such as drug and alcohol, large medical centers such as Medical University of South Carolina, local and civic and nonprofit organizations to create a program that bridges and fills in these missing voids. We are hopeful that our CP program will start in FY twenty-six. So looking even further ahead, we are hopeful of the transitioning from our CP program, our Community Paramedic Program, into what we consider a mobile integrated healthcare model, where multiple agencies do exactly what this slide states, helping patients find the best care practices, assess the services and resources to become and become the best version of themselves. Emergency care and transport to the hospital for EMS will not go away, but providing a wider scope of care is where we're heading. Dorchester County will continue to grow, and the needs for vital services will continue to also increase. I'm thankful for this department, for you as council members, and the county's continued support in our endeavors moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, before you get away, I wanna see if anybody up here has got any questions, comments they'd like to make. Just because you're the here, I'm gonna give you, I can give you a little bit more time.
Mr. Chairman, it's a comment. And you know, I think I speak on behalf of anyone who has elderly parents or family members in need of medical care. I went through about fourteen months with my parents, specifically my dad, who passed away a couple of months ago. And there were multiple times when EMS was called out, and we appreciate every single time everybody showed up, the compassion, the professionalism. And it was just good to know that if we called, you were gonna be there. We really appreciate it. And you know, just, it's, you know, I'm speaking for, you know, everybody will go through something like this at some point in their life, and it's just great to know that you guys are there for us. So thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else? I just, there's a lot of things that folks take for granted, and EMS is definitely one of them until they need them. We started, and Mario will have to give me a little bit of a heads up here. We started ten years, five years ago, eight years ago, when we went from this long shifts where we had folks in ambulances overnight.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Yeah, twenty eighteen, and we went to, we actually, I guess, led the low country by changing to the shift so that these folks got rest. It was important. It also helped from the standpoint of a county, when you look at having to provide bunkhouse and bunk rooms for EMS, we didn't have to do that. So that was part of that without question, is that ability to do that. But also looking out for the employees that we've had at that point in time. But I don't know what the vacancy rate was when Doug was there, but it was, it was probably way up there. Little things like that have gone through. We've struggled, as everyone, every community has struggled with getting a chassis for a box. We've probably got a couple of boxes sitting there waiting for chassis, still looking out after COVID. But we've done those things in conjunction with the town of Somerville. Put, and the primary function of the station, it seemed like, the fire DCFR station on Miles Jamison Road, over eighty percent of those calls were EMS calls, and we were rolling fire trucks. We now have an EMS unit on Miles Jamison in the Somerville, Somerville Fire Station and Dorchester County EMS there. So we continue to look at that as we put new stations up, the ability to make sure that these guys are out there. One of the things I used to get calls about all the time, and I usually pick up the phone call and tell them, is when they saw that EMS unit sitting in, I guess it's a food line now, but it was a buy-low shopping center right there on, between Dorchester, between Trolley and Bacon's Bridge Road, understanding that they were there so that they could respond faster. Because the one that they, bubbles that basically got bigger as someone rolled out of a station, that truck moved to the next closest space in the center of the area they were serving to keep those response times down. So if you see that EMS unit sitting in the middle of a parking lot, don't assume that they're sitting there in the buy-low or the food line, shopping. They're there trying to make certain that their response times are as short as they can be to provide those critical services. So thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is county administrators time. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and Council, I have several items for your consideration. The first item is first reading referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for a public hearing recommendation regarding rezoning request number nine thirty-one by Wanda Lenore to rezone one point seven acres located at sixteen thirty-six Central Avenue near Somerville, TMS number one thirty-five sixteen zero 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 two, from Office and Institutional District OI to General Commercial District CG, as for first reading and referral.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is first reading referral to the Planning, Development and Building Committee for a public hearing recommendation regarding an official map amendment number 25-01 for Dorchester County to rezone the following parcels. These rezonings are from AR to CLI and I, TMS number 098000009 and 0010 and 032, TMS number 026000057, TMS number 108000066, and TMS number 09700016, again from Agricultural Residential District AR to Industrial District I, and then TMS number 098000011, as well as 230, TMS number 007000127, as well as 230 through 233, from again Agricultural Residential District to Commercial Light Industrial District, with the purpose being these are existing uses for both industrial and commercial light industrial. They're currently non-conforming, legal non-conforming uses. If these businesses sought to expand, they would be unable to because of that, so we ask for first reading and referral.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think the one point I'm going to make here, just again, just to be clarify this, Jason alluded a little bit to this. This is legal non-conforming use today. When we took absence of control out and replaced it with AR, many of the conditional uses and special exceptions that were available under absence of control, which truly was never absence of control, but were eliminated when we went to AR. So as we changed our zoning code, a lot of these things have become tighter, more critical in looking at that. This is simply allowing those businesses that were there, that that fell under the special exception or something like that, under absence of control, that when we went to AR, it eliminated that. So the ability for them to continue to operate if they change business or something like that by changing it to the more appropriate zoning, and we've tried to right-size the zoning as we've gone through that. A lot of the stuff we caught early on when we did that massive countywide rezoning, some of them we didn't, this is the extent of, at least again, so far where we've gotten to today. So this is really nothing more than fixing something that we needed to fix. Any other discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is first reading by title only and referral to the Budget Finance and Purchasing Committee for a recommendation and public hearings regarding the Dorchester County budget ordinance for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and ordinance to make appropriations for county government, educational and fire protection purposes for Dorchester County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, to levy taxes for the payment thereof and to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming into the county, with the understanding that the county has scheduled and will hold public hearings both here and in St. George, with the first being held a week from today on May 12th, and then on the 19th of May. So I ask that you give first reading and refer this to the Budget Finance and Purchasing Committee.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Final item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of budget transfer for the magistrate's court, and I will ask that county council approve the transfer of $41,500 from personnel savings. There are in excess of $180,000 in personnel savings, but these funds will be used to install cabinets and countertops for the replacement of furniture, for the purchase and installation of new filing cabinets and equipment in the magistrate's court here in Somerville. Quotes were attached in the packet. If existing furniture can be repurposed from our warehouse, we will use that, but I'll ask for your approval for the authorization to do that transfer.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda are committee reports at 5:45. Planning, Building and Development met, Mr. Crosby.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If it pleases the council, I'd like to take these three up as they were all voted unanimously, if that's agreeable to the deas. So earlier this evening, the PDB meeting was held at 5:33 PM. There are three items on the agenda, the first one being a public hearing recommendation for second reading regarding rezoning request number 930 for Leotius Hires to rezone 1.0 acres located at 507 East 5th North Street near Somerville, TMS 138-00-00-013, from Transitional Residential District TRM to Office and Institutional District OI, and that was unanimous. 30 in favor. The next was a public hearing recommendation for a second reading regarding an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards, ordinance 0413, as amended with respects to Articles 8, Section 8.2.7b1, maximum density, and Article 21, Section 21-13c, off-site streets, right-ofways, and stormwater. The purpose of the amendment is to update and align the standards and requirements for the townhouse developments, and that was also voted unanimously 30. And the third item on the agenda was a public hearing recommendation for second reading regarding an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards, ordinance number 0413, as amended with respect to Article 5, Section 5.7.2, fees and development review fee schedule. The purpose of this amendment is to update the planning and zoning fee schedule, and this also was unanimous.
You heard the reports, the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
We are six in favor and one just stepped out. We're good. And I'm going to pass this down to...
Mr. Chairman, do you have a report from the Water and Sewer Committee?
I do. At 5:45 this evening, the Dorchester County Council Committee, the whole Water and Sewer met to hear the request for approval of new sewer service by Dorchester Commerce LLC for the Missouri Track Phase 1, TMS number 121-00-00-007, located near the town of Somerville. This request was to provide sewer service for two in Phase 1, two industrial buildings, properties currently zone mixed-use commercial. It was unanimous.
You heard the recommendation of the committee. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
We are unanimous. I'm sorry, say that. You said it.
We are unanimous.
Sorry. All right, next item, as I flip through the pages, are appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions?
I do. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Ms. Patricia Badley to the Alcohol and Drug Commission.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
I have a few also, but I'd rather just do them all at once.
Yeah, that's perfect.
A motion to reappoint the following, Ms. Barbara Jones to recommend the Tax Advisory Commission Committee, Elite Acused Act to the Board of Assessments Appeal, Board of Construction's Appeal, Mr. Willie Jenkins, Arizona Board, Mr. Richard Woods, Conservation Greenbelt Commission, Ms. Phyllis Hughes, Board of Zoning, Ms. Herman Dwight, Library Board of Trustees, Ms. Kitra Inabena, Seniors and Corporate Board of Directors, Sinclair Brown, Parks and Recreation Commission, Ernest Blaylock, Planning Commission, Burke Judy, Pro Communion Appeals Board, Ralph Martino, Economic Development Corporation, Lamont Stevens, Alcohol and Drug Commission is Bo Blanton, and then a motion to recommend to the Governor to reappoint Ms. Jill Turbeville to Disabilities and Special Needs Board.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for all those appointees. All in, any discussion?
Well done, sir.
It took forever.
That's all right. Hey, it's done. So all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Chairman Chenus?
Mr. Phil.
I have got a couple people I need to, first, I'd like to do a motion to recommend to the Governor an appointment of Ms. Patricia Parker to the Disability and Special Needs Board, and second, I would, that would be it right now. Ms. Parker to Special Needs Disabilities Board.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Anyone else? Any other appointments? All right, next item on the agenda is county attorney's time. Mr. Frampton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item I would request council's consideration is the adoption of Resolution 25-06, which is a resolution identifying a project and expressing the intent of Dorchester County, South Carolina, to authorize and enter into a fee in lieu of ad valorem tax agreement with Project ARC and other matters relating thereto. I would request adoption of that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Secondly, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the same project, I would request first reading by title only of an ordinance authorizing pursuant to Chapter 44 of Title 12 South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement between Dorchester County, South Carolina, and a company currently known as Project ARC and other matters relating thereto. I would request first reading by title only.
So moved.
Sir.
There is a motion and a couple seconds there. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the South Carolina Development Agreement Act, two public hearings are required for an amendment to a development agreement. The first public hearing will be held tonight. The second public hearing will be held June the 2nd at 6 o'clock or as soon thereafter is practicable here as well, 500 North Main Street, Somerville, in council chambers. This first public hearing of the two required public hearings would be regarding an ordinance approving a first amendment to that certain Oak Ridge landfill development agreement pursuant to the South Carolina Local Development Agreement Act and South Carolina, I'm sorry, in Dorchester County Ordinance Number 10-13, authorizing the chairman of county council to execute a first amendment to the development agreement. That amendment would grant the company an extension of the development rights until 2035, and also amends a portion of the development agreement dealing with estoppel certificates. So at this time, I would request that the first of the two public hearings be opened for public comment.
I will open the public hearing. Yet, if you want to come up front, say your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Mr. Wilson, this is 613 East Main Street. I have no intention of adjusting the council in reading this as a public hearing and just try to figure out how to kind of work this in. So I apologize for the mortar. I'm not going to use my full minutes there. This Oak Ridge landfill, I'm assuming that's the one that's in upper Dorchester.
It's at the swamp, yes, sir.
At the swamp, Oak Ridge landfill.
Near Public Works.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, sir. You know, one of the things that I often said and seen about these landfills, we've got some really large landfill, we're sometimes considered the dumping ground of county or the state, and I would always wonder why these landfills have been there for years and years and years and years, and I've never, I personally, this is just personally, I've never seen where they've given back to the community. I heard, I heard, right, knowing about, whatever, researched it, but I've heard that any kind of access to Clinton area, any kind of brownfield area, there was a requirement that these facilities get back to the community, and never seen anything given back to Dorchester or down off the Harrison Road. I mean, sometimes it took 20 years just to fix the road going that way. And so, so I oppose to the council that as these companies are coming to reevaluate or ask for amendment, that part of that is, is some stipulation that they do something back for the community that they live in. I personally have a friend off the Harrison Road, though, I grew up with him, and he suffers from emphysema, debilitating respiratory diseases, and I know it has come from him being in that area, just because it's, you know, a reputation person. And so, so I would ask the council that as these agreements come up, especially for these docks, that we ask them to give back to the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess, is this to expand the landfill exponentially for the next 10 years, 2035?
It merely extends the development agreement. It does not expand the landfill. That would be up to de-hack. There's no indication that I'm aware of any expansion. It is merely to extend their rights to operate the property as a landfill. That's simply all it does.
Can you answer the question? Thank you. The only thing is, is there's a lot of people still on well water in Dorchester County. These landfills, is there any extra testing being done?
Always.
Wells around the area? Not only that, you have four whole swamp, soccer, three soccer swamp, you have all of these areas where water hasn't been really good when tested privately. I'm wondering if there's any testing going on that, on that, for these landfills for surrounding water, for the people, people eat fish on any place, you know, if we could find that out, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Please, Mr. Ward. So I know. Yeah, go ahead, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Barbara Bell. We're in 6 Somers House. As before, as stated several times, not one more time, we are dying. If Dorchester contains, then all of St. George, even my mother, will come and come after you. Be aware, these landfills, as I told you all before, God built just land with the balance. If we do not balance for God that built, we're going to die. I know personally, out of Dorchester, at least I will pursue, as more than 50% are dying from cancer. You can check the local, the local funeral home, and my sister family, both of them are dying from cancer, and they live in Dorchester. Please be careful, darling, Dorchester County will be the double death. I myself would buy more, because it's rich as hell to live. Because it's my father, and I have a daughter, so that's going to help for so many. Please, think about what I've done since I was a child, and I have to give to Dorchester County, family.
Thank you.
So waste management that operates the Oak Ridge landfill does accept in-county waste, municipal solid waste. They also receive sludge from both of the wastewater treatment plants. There was conversation in terms of how the revenues are. It's a host fee that comes back to the county for any out-of-county waste. However, there is a distance at which it becomes inconvenient for people to haul out-of-county waste into our county. I think finally, one of the important things to note is Berkeley County operates a separate finally, one of the important things to note is Berkeley County operates a separate landfill as well as there's the Bee's Ferry landfill. So while there is some out-of-county waste that comes into that site, we are served very conveniently, all parts of the county, by having that particular landfill in place. The final thing I'll say, which Mr. Frampton has already indicate, indicated, DEHAC, now DES, Department of Environmental Services, does regulate that particular landfill. It is a lined landfill.
Mr. Ward just touched on the, on the last moment. If you haven't, if you've never, if you think a dump is somebody just dumping it in the ground and covering it up, you really need to look at the science of the landfill with the lining and the, any liquid that comes off of that that's drained off. It, it's, it's a relatively involved process. In fact, if there's any, if there's a challenge with a landfill, it typically comes down to the fact that a lot of stuff that gets buried in that landfill doesn't decompose because of the way that those landfills are built, basically. So it's, it's pretty interesting to see how one of those works. You may find newspapers in there that have been in there for fifty years that you can still read if you unfold them.
Yeah. Since it's a public hearing, I just want to speak in layman's terms for the people. I live in Dorchester, the city of Dorchester, and this is something that we've been complaining about for years. But some things has been done to stop the expansion, but if, if I read this correctly, the ordinance that he's reading tonight is just for the landfill to develop, like build buildings on the land or just extend the contract? Okay, all right. So...
Merely, in, in simple terms, it, it freezes the zoning
Okay.
of the property as it was back when
Yeah, I remember that.
the development agreement was done, so that the county, if the development agreement expired, the county could not change the zoning of that tax map number. Now, why the county would ever change the zoning of that site, I have no idea in this world, but that's a protection they seek because of their monetary investment in the property. So it basically freezes the zoning of the property as it stands right now.
Okay, because most people in the community is afraid that, and things was kind of misleading. There was under impression that it was trying to expand again.
No, sir.
And that's why I'm trying to get out, it's not trying to expand.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Not a request of the county for expansion.
Thank you.
I think the ultimate, one of the things that Mr. Ward may or may not have, it may not have been quite as clear too, is that the, the in-county waste that's generated when you take your trash bag to the convenience center or something like that, it's going to that landfill. If it doesn't go to that landfill, it's going to go to Bee's Ferry, Berkeley County, North Charleston, Off of Palmetto Commerce, basically, and I can assure you that your waste disposal fees just easily increased by a large factor over what it is, over what they currently are, because you would be paying the out-of-county rates to dispose of that waste.
As well as any curbside.
Yeah.
Well...
As well as a curbside.
I think the big misconception is from the past of things that, the way things have been done, and a lot of people in the community is, is still upset and, and don't understand the, the new procedures, the new precautions that have been put in place to help them. So basically, I got to figure out a way to get it out to the community to let them know what's really going on, to kind of, the temperature a little bit. But there, there was definitely issues, yeah.
I think the other thing to bring forward is there were existing county-operated landfill facilities that are not to be confused with the Waste Management landfill facility that for a number of years, the county was required to do monitoring reports with monitoring wells. That information had to be sent to DEHAC, and so they were monitoring that landfill even after it closed. But that is not the same, even though it is nearby, that is not the same landfill location that's being operated by Waste Management.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir. Just, Mr. Smith, I think you'll find, I mean, Waste Management's been a pretty good partner for the county for a lot of years. I think they're very accessible, so we'll make sure that you get in contact with those guys and be able to ask any questions. I think those guys really have been good partners for us for a while.
Yeah, I, I've been dealing with them for a while. My land runs right next to, I, I don't think nobody in this room in it closer than I am. Our land joined together, so it's been a lot of conversation back and forth about water and different things, but yeah.
And I serve on Chief Dorchester County Beautiful Board for twenty years now, and they have worked closely with Waste Management, and they used to have a representative on the board, and they do give tours. Like, you can schedule tours to learn how they, what actually they do there and how it is. So maybe some of your people might be interested in that.
All right. I only, my, my only last comment is, this was actually originally on the, if anybody questions, this was on the agenda at the last meeting. It wasn't the fault of Waste Management that got pulled. Ultimately, the ad didn't run in the paper properly, and we had to give proper notice so that, that, and, and your employee did a really good job trying to make sure we got it on that agenda. It just didn't happen like it should have happened, so we, we had it tonight. But we'll, we'll get it done before everything's over with, at least. Any further? I will close the public hearing.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would request second reading of the ordinance approving a first amendment to that certain Oak Ridge landfill development agreement pursuant to South Carolina Local Development Agreement Act and Dorchester County Ordinance ten dash thirteen, and authorizing the Chairman of County Council to execute the first amendment to the development agreement. Request second reading.
So moved. There is a motion
Second.
and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. I have one last. I wanted to welcome former Lieutenant Governor Bob Peeler, who snuck in the back here. Pleasure to see you here tonight, sir. Are there any other motions?
Question to adjourn.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous and adjourned.